There's no reportable action that's been taken in the closed session. Next student report, Superintendent Triplet.
Thank you, President Jun, and good evening to board members, staff, and community. So we're delighted to have our student reports this week. And I believe we are going to begin with the student leaders from the junior high. Is that correct, Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes, we're going to start off with Purvi Sharma. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Purvi. So in leadership, we held a seventh grade orientation day. We planned and will hold an ice cream social and club information day on Friday, September 3rd, which is tomorrow, as a way to build community and welcome students back on campus. And I'll hand it over to Mohammed.
Mohammed, you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys doing? So in New York High School, we are going to try to, we're in the process of renovating and restocking our student store and preparing to open it by mid-September, which is coming along very good. We're also going to be holding a holiday fundraiser with MoMo fundraising. This will allow us to have a safe way to raise money during the pandemic. And we'll also be able to participate, Safe Roots, during the school program at the beginning of October. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, student leaders. And next, I believe we have from the Alternative Education, is that correct, Ms. Gutierrez? And that's Alexis Blanco Baron.
Hi Alexis, you may begin.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Triplet, board members and county members. I'm Alexis Blanco Baron. I'm in 10th grade in August at Bridgepoint. I'm happy to be back as our student board representative. Crossroads is now home to Crossroads Elementary. Welcome to our 111 new coyotes. We have welcomed new teachers, a few more joining us in weeks to come. Bridgepoint began the year with Orientation Day. We now have advisory once a week and will soon be offering tutorial during eighth period. Our principal gave out prizes to Seven Panthers for their perfect attendance. I have one more concern. As a student of Bridgepoint, I noticed that we don't have much PE equipment. If any schools or locals want to donate equipment to us, we would be grateful. It could be used or new. Thank you for your, thank you and for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanco Baron. And lastly, but certainly not least, I'm really delighted to reintroduce our new student board member, and she's going to speak about Newark Memorial High School, Ms. Resendice Ortiz.
Thank you. Ooh, this works, alright. So over the past three weeks, Newark Memorial High has had quite the changes. The first two days of school, we had our Black Lights Assembly, which really brought some school spirit to the lowerclassmen, which had never experienced their assembly in the high school. Just this Friday, we had our first Heroes Night at our football game, and had a great representation of people who served our country. In terms of students' thoughts, a lot of us are still getting used to our schedule that we get out until 3:00, but we're hanging in there. Last but not least, each class is currently prepping for our annual skid assembly, and we're having various fundraisers for this. So stay tuned for our performances and merchandise coming out soon.
Thank you again. Welcome on board, our student board member. I believe that's it for student report, right? Moving on, employee organizations, Ms. Gutierrez.
Yes, we have our first employee organization in person, Ms. Sue Eustace from CSEA.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sue Eustace, as she indicated, and I'm president of your Newark Chapter 208. We are happy to be back, and we plan on having events this year to try to keep us busy and educated. We are, some of our first events are going to be our 11th Annual Benefit Fair and Professional Growth. It's going to be September 11th at the Birch Grove Primary School. Two of the classes that we're going to hold in the morning are Unconscious Bias. The second one is Staying Focused During Times of Change. We then plan on having lunch and a benefit fair, so that people can look at the different plans that we have through CVT and other benefits that we can get through CSEA, so that they have an opportunity to sign up for those. In the afternoon, we plan on having two more Professional Growth classes. Active Shooter is going to be one. Not that we want to deal with that, but it's good to be educated on it. And then, How to Deal with the Elephant in the Room. So these are events that we're going to be holding again on September 11th, and hopefully further our education and professional growth. We also plan on having a Welcome Back CSEA Newer Classified Night. It's going to be at O'Sullivan's on Thornton Avenue. It's going to be a little small gathering, having sodas and some little appetizers, and having to get together for a couple hours, so that we can actually see and enjoy one another and support one another. I also wanted to bring up, this is a separate issue, as you know, I teach in your adult school, and I teach Japanese drumming, I teach Taiko. And just, this weekend, our group, plus some of our students that we had a year and a half ago, performed at the East Bay Regional Park opening of their Dunbarton Quarry Campgrounds. And so we were able to play there, talk about how we are attached to the adult school, and kind of advertise, because we are getting started, starting on the adult end classes again this next year. So I'm very proud of the group. I did invite Dr. Triplet, and lo and behold, I get kind of a tapping as to, you know, like, hi, and I looked, I don't recognize anybody with a mask on, sorry. And he pulls down his mask, and I was terribly surprised. And I feel very supported that you came to our event. I'm very proud of the people that play Taiko. Some of them are younger, some of them are older. We take all ages. In the evening, we take adults, and on Saturday, we take kids. But really and truly, it's a benefit, we become a family, and we're very supportive of Newark Unified School District. I appreciate your attendance, Dr. Triplet, and feel supported. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is from Numa, and we have Dr. Wendy Castañeda Leal. Dr. Wendy, you may begin.
Good evening, President Jun, Board of Trustees and Executive Committee. The Newark Management Association is thrilled to have been part of bringing our NUSD students back to campus full-time. On behalf of Numa, we want to take this opportunity to thank our teachers, classified, and support staff for supportive transition to in, full-time in-person learning. We also welcome all new employees, teachers, and staff who have chosen to work with our community. Just some of the highlights that these past several weeks are the following. Staff at all schools spent countless hours preparing grumble cards, materials, and supplies for our students. We are also connected with students and parents through various forums, such as email, phone calls, social media, and other means of communication. We are so excited to see our students and hope for a successful, unique school year. Our junior high school and high school campus students were eager to start, and through continuous collaboration, we were able to support families as best as possible. It is a busy time of year, but very exciting. Thank you, Numa.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That's it for employee organizations?
Okay. Moving on to staff spotlight, Superintendent Triplet?
Thank you, President Jun, and I did want to just say a thank you to Ms. Eustace for inviting me to the drumming. It was very inspirational and an amazing group. So it's a real honor that we're able to support that group at the district. Ms. Gutierrez, can you put up the staff spotlight screen format for us, please? So this week, we wanted to, in particular, spotlight and celebrate a number of our staff who have been involved in supporting the new Crossroads Virtual Independent Study Program, which has been a really, really heavy lift to get going. As I think you all know, we have very little time after the governor announced this, that for us to put it together, and this group in particular has done such an incredible job. So just wanted to highlight them, not only for the support that they've given to the Crossroads Program, but then also just all the support they offer to our students and teachers and families. So first, wanted to highlight all of our, what we call our TOSAs, our Teachers on Special Assignment. We have four of them. The first one, Ms. Kim Nickerson, she's one of our EL TOSAs. She also supports, in particular, Coyote Hills, and she's been really instrumental in bringing and supporting our SEAL Program, which is in particular for English language learners. So want to appreciate her. And next, we have our other teacher on special assignment, Melissa Moore. Melissa Moore works specifically with music, but then also helps across the district. And she is a math expert. She coaches in math and supports teachers and students. I had the pleasure of sitting in on her professional development on our first day back, and I learned a lot about strategies for engaging students in math. And so she's also been really helping tremendously with the Crossroads Program. So that is Ms. Melissa Moore. And then we have Michaela Ashmore Holback. She is another teacher on special assignment that really focuses on English language learners and supporting our teachers with the SEAL Program. She, in particular, supports Schilling, but she also works at other schools as well. And she comes from a family of educators. I believe it's her father who is teaching, still teaching at Newark Memorial, and is also a tremendous teacher. So she has been fantastic, many years of supporting, in particular, English language learners at Schilling and across the district. Please join me in celebrating Ms. Ashmore Holback. And then our final teacher on special assignment, Ms. Pauline Kim. She, in particular, supports Lincoln, Lincoln Elementary, but she is what I think they call a tech TOSA. She does amazing stuff, supporting teachers throughout the district with technology and utilizing some of the different platforms that we've purchased. She's also been tremendous in supporting the Crossroads Program, just an amazing, amazing support. So please join me in appreciating Ms. Pauline Kim. So that is our TOSA team, just an amazing group that really step in and support wherever it's needed and just do phenomenal work. And then lastly, but certainly not least, wanted to appreciate, personal appreciation for Ms. Julie Calderon, the principal at the McGregor Campus. So as you know, she's the principal for Bridgepoint, for Crossroads, and the Adult Education Program. But in particular, I just wanted to just extend an appreciation to her, because she has really been the driving force in bringing up to speed this Crossroads Virtual Independent Study Program. It's been an amazing amount of work, and she's been able to do that while continuing to juggle all the other responsibilities she has, which is really, really significant. And we'll see later when I share the enrollment numbers, but the numbers at Crossroads Virtual Independent Study are really significant, way, way more than normally happen, normally attend Crossroads. So it really has constituted a tremendous amount of extra work. So please join me in appreciating Principal Calderon. And those are our staff spotlights for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Congratulations on all the honored staff members. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items, first we have Ms. Parks.
Well, to add on to some names that probably were left off from Crossroads were John Angelo and Cree Hodges, which are the two teachers that have been the staple for Crossroads for a number of years. Once again, I'd like to mention that there are many issues with the district's new website. Information is missing or outdated. Several links are not working. There isn't a direct link from the homepage to the board agenda, and the LCAP is not predominantly displayed on the homepage. It's been 18 months since I've been in this room, and it's nice to be able to come back and see all of your faces. I do have to say, I was kind of shocked to see the executive assistant go back into closed session in all of my years attending board meetings. I've never witnessed that before. When a member of the community takes time out of their day to submit a concern or poses a question on Zoom or from this podium, they're relying on you, their elected officials, to supply a response. Your Governor's Handbook states, "People speaking at board meetings will be listened to with respect." In regards to complaints and concerns of the public, the board president delegates the responsibility to the superintendent, and the matter will be responded to as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, this practice hasn't been taking place. During the previous 18 months of Zoom board meetings, those of us providing live comments felt like we were talking to a wall. You are allowed to respond or direct staff to respond to the public when the question is concerning an item on the agenda. I'm sure all of you believe in transparency and support the community receiving responses to their concerns and their questions. It seems to me the most efficient and transparent way to respond about an item on the agenda would be for the response to be provided at the board meeting. That way, all of those on Zoom or YouTube will benefit from the response. If it pertains to an item not on the agenda, the board can still direct the superintendent to respond to the current concerns or questions. I hope you will all support this transparent, open government practice and reinstitute it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is virtual, and it is Monica Piedra.
Monica, por favor, puede apagar su video? Bueno? Sí, Monica, por favor, puede apagar su video para solamente escuchar su audio? Gracias, puede empezar. Está en mute, por favor, prende su micrófono. Su audio está apagado. Oh, sí. Ya, puede empezar. Sí. Buenas noches, Doctor Triplet y miembros de la mesa directiva. Nuestros padres voluntarios de nuestro grupo, Padres para mejores escuelas de Niueu, nos reunimos con ustedes, el señor Lucía Gutierrez, el 23 de julio, para discutir nuestra decepción con la falta de respuestas y respecto demostradas en nuestra comunidad latina. Compartimos con ustedes cuántos de nuestros padres se sienten desconectados con el liderazgo del distrito y los administradores de las escuelas. Por ejemplo, muchos de nuestros padres han hecho preguntas durante nuestro ILAC y DILAC y el Consejo Escolar al personal del distrito sobre el presupuesto y las preocupaciones o servicios para los aprendices de inglés, y nunca nos han dado ninguna respuesta. También vemos la falta de respeto que se le ha dado a nuestros padres latinos cuando se trata de proporcionar traducciones de documentos. Por ejemplo, ustedes y su equipo prometieron que Coyote Hills iba a ser una transición sin problemas. Sin embargo, permítanme informales que muchos de nuestros padres todavía no reciben ninguna comunicación de la directora o no se sienten bienvenidos por la falta de comunicación. Nos dimos cuenta de que los padres tuvieron problemas para conectarse en la reunión del martes. Uno porque no recibimos enlace, y era difícil de encontrarnos en la web del distrito. Aquellos de nosotros que pudimos conectarnos sentimos que nunca contestaron las preguntas y inquietudes de los padres sobre los protocolos y pautas de las escuelas. Deberían de seguir, pero no están siguiendo. Primero, la limpieza no se lleva a cabo de manera consistente, y los estudiantes todos comiendo muy cerca. También, nos gustaría ver cómo se enseña, se enseña a nuestros estudiantes de educación especial. Estamos escuchando que el distrito no han brindado apoyo de su directora de educación especial. No está al tanto de las necesidades. Ya basta de sus promesas y queremos respuestas. Gracias.
Gracias. Alright, I will be translating this statement. This is a voluntary group of parents who have recently met with the superintendent to discuss the treatment that the Latin community has been facing and the disconnect that they are feeling. Likewise, they posed many questions during meetings, such as DILAC and ELEC, and still have not received answers. They are feeling a sense of lack of respect due to the improper or poorly translated documents. You promised that there would be an easy transition at Coyote Hills Elementary, but still there is a lack of communication from the principal. They were not sent information like the links in order to attend the recent meetings. There is a lack of consistency in the cleaning, the children aren't eating too closely, and students with special needs are not getting the support they need from the director. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Eric Tam. You may begin.
Similar to how Cindy said last time, we and Cindy did not meet up for coffee to coordinate our speeches. But anyways, hi, Board. I wanted to share my experience with the Fremont Unified School Board meeting that I watched over a recording. A parent shared that meeting link as they were discussing HREC in their most recent meeting. Several community members and teachers spoke in person about, during their public comment non-agenda section. Topics ranged from school lunch lines being too long, to, you know, the waste creation from free lunches, to the malfunctioning HRECs experiencing in certain schools. What surprised me the most was, after the public comment period, each and every one of the board members went one by one and asked the superintendent and addressed the concerns, questions about topics that were raised. And I was very surprised, as that was not my experience here, and I thought that there was a legal requirement or policy requirement that forbid that. So as a community member, I wish that NUSD could possibly implement a similar system to what FUSD is doing, because I feel like it facilitates a dialogue between the board and the community. Regardless if you agree or disagree, I would enjoy hearing your thoughts and understanding more about what the board is doing. So I hope the board can look into that with an agenda item and see how you can create that system that Fremont Unified is doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker. Next speaker is Lorena Talavera. Lorena, you may begin.
Hello, board members. I would like to speak to you on behalf of the 53% of your student population. Yes, that is correct. Over 53% of your student population is Latino, majority of them coming from Spanish-speaking homes. Why is this important? Well, recently, I had a food menu sent to my home. My child's nutrition is very important to me, and I rely heavily on the menu to know if my child will eat at school or I will prepare something for him. Recently, I had to ask myself, what kind of metal bolt nut was my child going to be fed at school? I then understood that that was actually meant that my child will have honey nut cereals, something very different than bolt nuts. Thank goodness. However, this is the kind of translation you are providing to families. You are sending COVID-related letters home, which seems important enough that you will want all parents to understand what is going on. But if you can't translate it properly, how are you going to keep us all families informed, especially those representing the 53% of your students? Based on your financial reports, your ASL translator is getting over three times the amount Spanish-speaking translators are getting. I'm sure that she is only serving a handful of people in Newark. As important as they are, so are the 53% of the students and families here. So why are you not showing us the same value? You will never get a good quality translation at that rate. Spanish translators are a commodity, and you treat them as if they were dying a dozen. We deserve and demand good quality and correct translation, and you will not find that at $15 an hour. Show us you care about the 53% of your student population and provide an adequate translation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That's it for the public speakers?
Okay. Moving on to superintendent report, Dr. Triplet?
Thank you, President Jun, and thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Alright. So again, good evening. This is the superintendent's report for this evening. There were two things that the board, I think, mentioned that they would like to hear more about this week, and so we have these two items on the superintendent's report.
Actually, I apologize. Before you begin, President Jun, there is a public speaker on this item. Do you want to hear the public speaker first?
Let's go for the public speaker first.
Ms. Guerrero, you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
Good evening, Dr. Triplet and Board of Trustees. I am a member of the Volunteer Parents I am a member of the volunteer parents representative of the Newark Parents for Better Schools. We met with Dr. Triplet and Ms. Lucia Gutierrez on July 23rd to discuss our disappointment with the lack of response and respect demanded towards the Latino community. We share with you how many of our parents felt disconnected with the leadership of the district and site administrators. Data was presented to you and Lucia and you seemed extremely surprised when I informed you that ELS makes 20% or more of each of the following schools. Schilling with 45%, Bridge with 26.3%, Bridgepoint with 25.8%, Crossroads with 20%, Music with 41%, Kennedy with 23.3%, Lincoln with 23.9%, Newark Junior High with 22.4%, and the newly merged school Coyote Hills with 61.2%. At least eight out of the 10 schools, we have more than 40% social disadvantaged students. Schilling with 74.9%, Bridgepoint with 75.8%, Crossroads with 72.1%, Music with 62.2%, Lincoln with 49.6%, Newark Junior High with 55.5%, Newark Memorial High School with 48.7%, and not to even mention the newly merged Coyote Hills with more than 100% based on the state data. We also asked the following questions. How was the outreach to the non-English speaking done for important meetings like LACAP, town hall meetings, budget, closure of the schools, etc.? What factors was considered for the principal signed and why is Akila Bird no longer with the district? She was one of the most effective principals the school had had. She raised our ELA and math standard test scores. She provided training for all of our ELAC parents and made sure that all the needs of our students were met. She also made sure that all the information was sent in the primary language for our Latinx community and always went the extra mile to support the school community. As of today, there is still no answers. We want to remind you and the boards that we are taxpayers and voters and that we want the school district to respect and respond to our community. After years of such treatment, we are not sure that the district is capable of solving the problems of including an effective community. We are at a point where we are considering other educational options for our children. We will continue to be present and vocal to our school board meetings. Thank you very much for your time.
Superintendent Triplet, you can begin yours before.
Okay, thank you, President Jiang, and thank you to the public commenters. So this evening, the superintendent report is going to focus on two things. Enrollment and giving an update on our current enrollment and then also on an update on some of the marketing and promotion strategies that we have been employing. And this is based on requests from the board from a previous meeting. So here you see the current enrollment. I'll take a moment just to talk through this, but it's very similar to the way that I was presenting it last year. So you have all the schools on the left side, then the projections that we made in spring, and then you have enrollment as of yesterday for each of the schools. I want to say that, well, first of all, you can see the total down below that we are under-enrolled based on the projections by 287 students total. And that's definitely cause for concern. I would say that this is indicative of all of the districts that I have spoken to in Alameda County. I don't know if it's true of other districts outside the county, but this is something that is superintendents are noticing in many different areas. And so then we really want to try to dig deeper into what are the implications of that? The implications of COVID on this as well as other factors. I will point out a couple of points. You can see that Schilling is actually a school where they've almost hit their projection numbers and the other school is Lincoln. So those are two sort of, I would say, exceptions to the decline in enrollment across the board in all of our schools. The other two points to note, Bridgepoint, that's the alternative education in-person program, high school program. The numbers are up there above projections by 13. And then you can see one of the reasons why the individual schools have much lower numbers than normal is because, of course, Crossroads Virtual Independent Study Program, there was a projection because we did not know at the point when we made these projections in the spring that this would be the state mandate in terms of virtual independent study. So the projection at that time, based on historical trends, was 14 students in Crossroads. And as you can see, we have as of yesterday, 151 students, that's kindergarten through 12th grade. So that's 137 students more than projected. Could we do the next slide? So shifting gears a little bit, I wanted to share some of the marketing campaigns, strategies that we have employed in the last, I would say, six months. And so these are just sort of the beginning of what we're really hoping to do and continue this year. So one thing, first and foremost, is, actually, why don't we go to the next one? I think each one is, yeah. So first and foremost, we spent a lot of time into developing the new website and have issued the soft launch and very excited about how it's gone thus far. Of course, part of a soft launch is that we are going to continue to build and grow the website, but we really wanted to get the platform out there because the old site was so outdated and really was essentially inoperable. Do want to point out some of the things on the new website. We've installed a COVID section with a lot of different resources around COVID safety. We do have the board meetings. There's a whole board section, the board agendas. You can find them on the first page as well as if you go to the board, the board section itself, but the link to the board agendas are all on the first page. And then a lot of other resources. But again, we will continue to grow this and build this out because it is a soft launch, but we're really excited about the new look and I think it really presents much more of the amazing things that are happening in the district. So I wanted to talk about, you saw on the agenda slide that something that we've really focused on as I would call a micro campaign was the dual-language immersion program. And so in a minute, I'll share out some different data and stats around, first of all, what we've done to really promote the program and then also you saw the results are that unlike some of the other schools, the dual-language program and Schilling actually has much less of a, actually almost hit the enrollment projections. So we did do a number of videos and you can go to the next slide, please, Ms. Gutierrez, regarding the dual-immersion program. And then if you go to the next slide. And then another video campaign that we did was what we call the Newark Ready Promotional Video Campaign. And so that was really presenting, so the readiness, generating energy and excitement around returning to in-person learning. And we did create this last year and then we released it just before the return to in-person last year. And then we also released it again at the beginning of this school year. And then the other aspect of the dual-language enrollment promotional micro campaign was the mailing that we did. So we sent out a flyer mailer to, I believe it was over 60,000 citizens in both Newark and the surrounding areas. We sent this out both in English and in Spanish since it was promoting the dual-language immersion program. And so this is one strategy that we use to really generate energy and get out the word about what was happening with this program. So I wanted to share a little bit of data around now these videos and other strategies that we've been using. So what you see here on the left is the different videos I was just mentioning. The first one where it says August 16th, that's the Newark Ready video. And then below it, August 2nd is the first of the dual-language immersion videos. And I believe August, oh, sorry, it was the second of the dual-language immersion videos. July 27th was the first of the dual-language immersion videos. And then March 25th, like I mentioned before, was when we sent out the original Newark Ready video. So it's quite remarkable what, you know, the platform's online. We were able to reach, you can see the reach over there on the right side, between 32,000 and 40,000 individuals online with these videos. They each ran one to two weeks each and we were able to stretch the reach, not just Newark, but surrounding zip codes. Next slide, please. And so this is a little bit of data around the results. So again, you see the reach right there, which I already discussed. Likes and reactions, as I'm sure you're all aware of, is when someone actually responded with a positive click. And then you see the number of times that each video was shared. And then to the right of that, you see the number of clicks. So that is actually one of the most significant ones because that's when someone actually went and clicked on it and then watched it all the way through and sometimes clicked to a different, clicked to the website or something, some other place. And so you can see, for example, the first time we sent out the Newark Ready video, 1,500 people actually clicked on it. So it was reached to 42 and a half thousand people, 221 liked it. It was shared 25 times and then there was like an additional click 1,500 times. That's just as an example on that first video. And then lastly, we are really starting this year a campaign on social media to celebrate and promote all the positive things that are happening in our schools and our classrooms. And so this is just an example from Instagram. You can see these, what we're trying to do is get out, trying to get out a post daily. We started off right at the start of school. And so you can see to the right there, the number of people that each post reached. We have about, I believe it's 600, I don't want to speak incorrectly. I think we have 665 followers on Instagram. Is that right, Ms. Gutierrez? And so then you can see any given post on any given day, how many people that reached. And then you can also see how many people liked it. And I believe this is another example here. So on average, we're getting around 400 people that are able to view our daily Instagram and similar numbers for Facebook, although we're really looking at Facebook as also a place where information is shared, not just a place to be celebrating and promoting the positive things happening in the schools. So that's a little bit about the micro campaigns that we've done thus far. And again, the results, I think, from the dual-language program is something really significant. We're hoping to get those same kind of results in other aspects of our programming. Next steps, we really want to continue this rollout of the website itself. We also want to develop additional micro campaigns. And then lastly, we really want to be moving forward with a partnership with the city in terms of creating a marketing strategy that we can partner on to really get out the good word about both the wonderfulness of Newark itself as a city and then also the great things happening in our school district. And that's the presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions from the board? Student member, any questions?
No, thank you.
Rest of the board, questions? Go ahead.
So thank you, Dr. Triplet. Two questions. First, related to the website. So normally in an IT implementation, you'll lay out and you'll have a set of objectives of what you want to achieve by the end of the implementation and you'll have a due date, a go-live date. And then if you're going to do different, there's different strategies. But if you're going to do a follow-on project like a phase two, you'll also identify here are enhancements that we're planning for phase two and it's almost like a separate project and you'll have a separate due date. So just, so first question is, you know, for our phase one, you know, what were the objectives? Have we accomplished all those or are there some things that are still outstanding? And then for our phase two, what are the additional enhancements that we're looking at? And what's sort of the expected, you know, date to deploy those enhancements? So that's question one. And then question two is related to the marketing campaign. So do we have a budget for the campaign? And then just out of curiosity, are we using any type of outside firm to help us or are we really doing this internally? So those are my two questions.
All right. Thank you, Member Hill. Yeah, so for the first question, so like I said, this has been a soft rollout. We were actually really hoping to have the website fully online in the spring, but that didn't happen. There's a lot of challenges. And so we did want to make sure that we got it out before the start of school. So there are a lot of different things that we want to continue to build and grow on the website. So we're not really finished with that first phase. There's both supporting our staff to learn how to be putting things up on the website. So there's still a lot of like professional development around that. And then also continuing to evolve the images and the different pages on the website. So that's still phase one. And then, and so we're going to work throughout the fall to really be continuing to build that out. And then I'm happy to come back and share more about other phases after that's been accomplished. With regard to your second question, budget for campaigns. I don't have it like off the top of my head, but I'm happy to come back and bring that back in terms of what we have budgeted for different campaigns. And then I think, sorry, what was the last question?
And are we using a firm to help us or are we doing it internally?
Right. So with the website, we have used Final Site. It's a company that supports districts and other schools to build out websites. And then we also have been utilizing an individual who has a lot of experience and has proven to be really, really effective in terms of taking a lot of the photographs, the videos. And then he actually has been able to support us with the website, continue to build out the website style and development as well.
And the individual, they're helping on that, both on the website as well as on the marketing efforts?
On, yes, on the website as well as the photographs and videos.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
You have no more, you have questions?
I do.
Member Grendel?
Thank you, President Jiang. So I'm heartened to see the attempt to work with the city to do a marketing strategy. The, so I wanted to see, I wanted, the question is, what happens if the city doesn't come along with us on this effort? My concern is that doing marketing pieces without an overarching strategy is not an efficient use of resources, in my opinion. So I was wondering what your thoughts were if the city won't sort of come along with us, whether we have a path to actually get a marketing strategy.
Yeah, thank you, Member Grendel. Yeah, so these things have been done, like I said, sort of like micro campaigns and really focused really focused on the things that are in front of us. But what we want to do is engage with a firm that can support us with a larger strategy. And if we can partner with the city, great. If, for whatever reason, if that's not possible, then that's something that we want to do on our own. But we really want to bring that back to the board, that, once we've landed on a firm that can support us with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Moving on to staff report, NUS 12.1, NUSC safety plan and COVID-19 update. Any public speaker on this item? Okay, so we'll open up for board discussion. Student Board Member, any questions or discussion about safety plan?
Sorry, President Jiang, could I just say one thing before discussion starts? So, yeah, so we have revised the safety plan that we submitted in the, I believe it was in January, February to the county, and that was approved by them. And the understanding was that as COVID evolved and as conditions changed, that we would continue to revise this plan. So what we're bringing forth today is the most revised version. And what we do is we're working with the county, County Public Health Department, as well as the County Office of Ed, to continuously be making revisions and changes as the conditions change. So I would love your input, as well as any questions you have, because we are also engaging community with the plan. We got some good questions and also good feedback. On Tuesday, at town halls, we held a town hall in Spanish, and then we also held a town hall in English with regard to the plan and the different safety measures that we've taken. So would love your feedback and happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Student Board Member?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question refers specifically to the board, but during pause, students do switch classes. Is there any protocol to follow when students stay in like different classes and there's no seating chart, and you don't know if there's like students who may or may not have COVID and moving to different classes affecting other students?
Yeah, thank you, Student Board Member. So you're talking about in particular the pause class because it's not the regular class with the regular seating chart, is that right? Yeah, so the guidelines are such that a seating chart is not mandatory. The guidelines in the county recognize, in the state recognize that there's going to be different classes where students are interacting. So the whole idea of cohorts is no longer something that is mandated by the state or the county. But having said that, I think you're absolutely right, that the more that we have seating charts, then the better it is, or the easier it is to do any sort of contact tracing. And so I appreciate you bringing it up. That's something that we definitely want to, we'll look back to the high school on, is how to capture the seating arrangement on any given day in the pause program, so that if, God forbid, that there is a COVID, positive COVID case in that area, then contact tracing is easier. When, we have had circumstance where there wasn't a seating chart in a class, and there was a positive case identified, and in that situation, the guidelines say that if you cannot, if you're unable to identify who was a close contact and who wasn't, then you really have to quarantine the whole class. And so we have had situations already where we've had to do that, not many, but at least one. And so what we want to do is really avoid that by having seating charts, so that it's much easier to do the contact tracing, and that means everybody doesn't have to quarantine, only those who are in close contact. So thank you.
Board Member, can you log into the boardroom voting app, so you can click on the request? Password's 1234.
Oh, is that simple?
Member Hill, go ahead. Any other board member have questions?
Oh, no, no, you can't log into the boardroom.
The boardroom voting app is a separate app.
Are you talking about boardrooms?
No, boardroom is your own password, the one that where you click Request to Speak and to Vote, that's a separate app, that's a...
Where's the...
That's, oh, they don't, okay, well, that...
Me too.
Sorry, I'm going to touch you.
Please?
I'm here.
Oh, that thing, okay.
Yeah, password 1234.
Oh, I see, okay.
Sorry, I'm blind. Oh, Member Grindel is not on here.
I'm not either.
That might need some updating, so we can, can we do raise your hands in the meantime?
Okay.
Okay, and I need mine, just to add to it.
Okay, Member Hill, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so just to add to this topic, so one suggestion maybe that our district might consider, so at my, at my school where I'm working at Cupertino, we're facing the same issue, where you have a class that is not a static class, right, where you could go in, you know, I think you're going to pause here. And how we're handling it is we've actually created one of those QR codes, and so in each classroom, we've got a QR code, so when the students come in for this period, because it could be random students, they just scan in, and then we immediately know who's been in that particular class on that particular day. So it might be something that, you know, we might explore, I don't know if it would work or not, but that's what we're doing in our school.
Thank you, Member Hill, that's helpful. I think the challenge, the thing that Student Board Member raised up, though, is not just who's in the room at any given moment, but who's a close contact, meaning like is in direct proximity. And so we'd have to, we'd have to, you know, think through that as well.
Go ahead, Member Grindel?
Yes, thank you, President Jiang. I just wanted to compliment staff on the safety plan and the town halls that you've been holding. I'm assuming that you, that the materials that were in the town halls were also in Spanish, and these flow charts are extremely complicated. So if there's ways to simplify those, and particularly making them available in people's language they're most comfortable with is something that's very important. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Member Grindel. Yes, we actually, the flow charts, we've gotten directly from the county, and they do translate it not just into Spanish, but also other languages that are used in the county. So that's been really, really helpful. They are super complicated. So, yeah, it's something that we've been really appreciative of, that the county has offered that.
No more questions?
Oh, no.
Okay, Member Wen?
In regards to this being a live document, as soon as, I'm assuming that we will eventually phase in student testing, and will that be part of this documentation as well?
Yes, thank you, Member Wen. Yes, we're planning on phasing in the student testing, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, after we've gotten the adult testing fully up and running. And yes, that would become part of this as well, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report. Moving on to the next one, 12.2 HVAC Air Balancing Services Report. Any public speakers on that?
Yes, I have one, one second. Eric Tam, you may begin.
Mr. Tam, can you unmute yourself?
Eric Tam, you may begin.
I think maybe he's away, we'll come back if he's back online. Bring back to the board, any comment from Superintendent before the board asks questions?
Oh, thank you. So we're moving on to 12.2, right?
Yep, HVAC balancing.
Yeah, thank you. I believe, we do have a, someone here that, or someone's going to be online that is going to present, from the air balancing company. So we have, we've been spending a lot of time and energy and have an entire team that's been working really diligently to do the air balancing and really make sure that all of our HVACs are running properly. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dela Cruz first to speak a little bit and introduce the guest.
Thank you, Dr. Triplet, and good evening, board. For the past several months, we have been working on the air balancing project to make sure that our classrooms have proper airflow according to the guidelines. And like Dr. Triplet mentioned, it has involved a team of contractors and consultants, including Cypress Engineering, where our panelist guest is from, Mr. Sertunk, Alpha Air Balancing, Western Allied, and Cizerco Energy. We couldn't have done this without everybody involved. And Mr. Sertunk will be going over the final report that was submitted to the district. Mr. Sertunk, can you hear me?
Yeah.
And then Ms. Gutierrez, if you could put up the presentation, please?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, we're going to put up the presentation.
Okay, then you guys are ready to let me know.
We'll let you know when we're ready. Mr. Sertunk will go over the process that we went through and the report.
Oh.
Go ahead, Metin, or Mr. Sertunk.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Triplet, community members, and more importantly, all the students and the parents. My name is Metin Sadpunch. I'm a certified building commissioning provider, certified energy manager, and mechanical engineer. So today, tonight, we are going to try to summarize what we did all summer long, to try to make existing HVAC equipment better, and at the same time, adjust all the airflows. Tonight, what we are going to cover is what was the goal when we get involved, background information, when we start the project, what we did at the beginning. I'm going to introduce to team members what is involved in this process. I also going to explain, try to explain all the functions of the HVAC equipment, what we did, and what we find out, and how we try to fix it. We also, we're also going to mention about the initial process, how we collect the data, what we recommend for the district, and assess the recommendation and implement the recommendations. And finally, we provide some kind of certification, write a letter, and the results to the school district, and also, we also make some recommendation ongoing operation. Next slide, please. District's, district goal when we start this project is to make sure that all the HVAC equipment is functional for the school reopening and complies with the latest CDC and ASHRAE guideline. In order to do that, district hire two entities. The first one is, I am the commissioning agent, and I am the mechanical engineer and certified testing, adjusting, and balancing contractor. The first goal was to make sure that all the HVAC equipment was providing enough ventilation. Ventilation means outside air to every classroom or every space. We also later on, I'm going to try to explain it, we involve an HVAC contractor for the repairs, and this is the Western Allied Mechanical, and also district hire Cizerco, which is, which is in charge fixing and adjusting all the building and energy management control system. And also, most importantly, district maintenance department also helped us to get into all these spaces and provide all the accesses. Next slide, please. Now, a little bit background information, what we were going to do is, at the beginning, we want, because as you know, you have many rooftop units in all over the school district. Like when you look at the buildings, you see the rooftop equipment, and almost all of them is identical to each other. At the beginning, we wanted to sample a couple of units to make sure that equipment is functioning, and we were going to try to make a recommendation based on the sampling. And then another, another, another task that we wanted to do is, because CDC and ASHRAE always recommends the MRR13 filters instead of MRR9 filters, so we were going to do some tests to make sure that existing equipment can handle MRR13 filters. I wanted to mention a little bit, maybe, there are so many social media and the explanation in the, you know, newspapers and the social media about the MRR13. MRR13 is a little bit thicker filter, it filters ninety-five, ninety percent of three to one micron particles, very small particles. MRR9 is, filters fifty percent. So there is a big difference between MRR13 and MRR9. That's why district wanted to make sure that their aged equipment can handle MRR13 filtration. So we also want to make sure that we were going to provide enough outside air, so we will have enough air changes in every classroom. So we want to make sure all the outside damper positions are checked, operational, and functional. We also, after we find out if the ventilation rates are not enough, we wanted to assess the situation and recommend some remedial actions, so our HVAC equipment can function as good as possible. Next slide, please. In the initial checks, we find out a lot of malfunctionalities. This is, this is very common when your equipment is fifteen to twenty years old, and over the years, there are some equipments, you know, aged. What we find out is some of the equipments, as I mentioned, you have probably like around nine hundred different units. So when I talk about it, we didn't find all of them is not functional. We find some of them not functional. These malfunctionalities are listed in the slide, which is equipment controls, actuator malfunctions. When I say actuator, typically motorized damper, unpowered units, some of the units were, didn't get the power, some of the belts was broken, fan was rotating, but they were not providing enough air, filter access issues, filter, and other miscellaneous repairs. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, we wanted to check, we wanted to sample the equipment, so we can go for the next building, sample another one. we wanted to sample the equipment so we can go for the next building, sample another one. So Alpha Air Team checked all the mode of operation, uh, with the district. These are, uh, uh, you know, the units are operating in heating, operating in cooling, operating in, uh, economizing. Uh, economizing means like, uh, when the outside conditions are right, which is cold, uh, our equipment uses fresh air to cool the inside, uh, inside conditions. Uh, so, uh, well, they, they did check all these, um, operation modes. And then they provided this information to me and, uh, me, top contractor and had district assess the conditions. What do we need to do to, uh, improve the HVAC, uh, equipment and operation? So district, we are recommending the district to hire mechanical con- licensed mechanical contractor and the control contractor to make some repairs because some of the items require, uh, some repairs and some replacements. So next slide, please. So, uh, as I introduced the other companies, additional team members were the mechanical contractor, which is Western Allied Mechanical, and the control contractor. Uh, I still want to note that, um, you know, district personnel, uh, always with us to make sure that we can do our work, uh, and we have accesses to all the roofs and the building management control system. Next slide, please. So, uh, now maybe you may have a question, why we have so many people, so, so many different contractors? But I wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, each, each contractor has, uh, specialties. So top contractor, they have calibrated equipment. They measured outside air, supply air, return air, and they want to make sure that all whatever our measured air are, uh, accurate. The commissioning provider, uh, we analyze the results and identify the malfunctions and I do some recommendations. And then based on my recommendations, mechanical contractor fixed the HVAC equipment mechanically. And then the control contractor, which is in charge of the building management system, they need to fix the controls. Next slide, please. So at the end, we created a single page, the, the single document showing all the outside air quantities and all the malfunctionalities. So based on this document, we started to work to eliminate and to make sure that all the equipment is functioning as much as possible. As I mentioned before, all the equipments are aged. So, and then during this process, contractor provided and reported to, uh, daily reports to us, so we update these, uh, uh, documents. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just before the, uh, you know, school reopening, uh, we, uh, wanted to make sure that, uh, we have a summary of outstanding issues, uh, during July, uh, twenty twenty-one. So after we get this report, we still, uh, work on the sum of the items and, uh, we managed to complete all the HVAC items serving the classrooms were completed and we reported to all items collected in the classroom. As of now, district still using the same team to do some additional repairs or the, the malfunctionality is happens after, after the initial checks. Next item, please. So I think I mentioned this, what we are, what we were, uh, what, what the co- what the team checked. Uh, and then, uh, I think I already mentioned this slide. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the final result, all the existing rooftop units serving the classroom are aged and are planned to be replaced as funds allow. So you, within a couple of years, I believe that, uh, most of the equipment, uh, I mean, three hundred plus equipment will be replaced. Existing HVAC equipment has never operated with the MIR 13 filters in the past. And the top contractor and artist verified that MIR 13 filters can work with the existing equipment without adverse effects. And existing filters in all typical classrooms are still MIR nineteen. Uh, the airflow and the ventilation rates were checked, uh, and, uh, multiple, uh, sample units, uh, and we decided that MIR 13 filter can, uh, be used for the future. Okay, I, I think I mentioned too many times MIR 13, but, uh, but anyway, how did we check these things? We want to make sure that when we use the MIR 13, we still get the total airflow, uh, and the pressure drop through the filters are the same, compatible, uh, with, with the, with existing filters. Differences in CFM, the air flows, and the pressure drops were negligible. Units were in high, when we were checking these units, we want to make sure that the units were in the high speed and outside air dampers are in minimum position. So, uh, why we, why did we do that? Because, uh, if the unit, sometimes units are operating in the low speed, uh, low speed, our filter, uh, will definitely warm. We want to make sure that we are, uh, checking the, uh, equipment full functionality. Next slide, please. So, um, MIR 13 filters are ordered and the district will replace all the units with the MIR 13 filters. Remember, when I tried to explain the MIR 13, MIR 13 is filtering a lot more, uh, smaller particles than the MIR 9s. So the district maintenance staff needs to determine a proper maintenance schedule for replacing the MIR 13, which means that some cases, MIR 13 filters needs to be replaced more often. And, uh, at the end, uh, this was the last slide. Uh, I was trying to, uh, summarize the overall, um, process in maybe ten minutes. So, uh, well, what we try to do is achieve, uh, try to achieve your mechanical equipment function with their full potential. So if you have any questions right now, I can try to answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, watching the clock, we're approaching the thirty minutes limit. One round of questioning. Student board member, you go first.
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Board members, rest of the board, member Hill?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So it's, it sounds like our existing equipment can handle MIR 13, which is good. Um, the question for you is you had mentioned we have over nine hundred units. You identified some that are, um, uh, non-operational and then, you know, many that are aged. Do you have a sense of what percentage are non-operational and need to be fixed? And then for the aged unit, do we have sort of a, an idea of which units they are? And do we have sort of a list of priority?
Yes. Uh, well, that's what we did, actually. Uh, we have a list, uh, and then we identified all the equipment and we pro- prioritize the classrooms first. And all the classrooms are operational as of now. And there are some units, um, uh, like some of the storages, you know, uh, they are still under, uh, you know, mechanical contractor is still in the process to get some, uh, parts to, uh, fix those units. And also, uh, during the process, we actually use one of the equipment, uh, one of the school site, Graham School Site, uh, as a repair parts. As you guys, uh, see, HVAC industry has a, uh, really big problem about, uh, getting the parts right now. Just like, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, everybody was trying to get the toilet paper or whatever, you know? We are in the same position right now. When we order something, it, it takes some time to get it. So district, uh, uh, and all the team assessed the situation and we use some of the actuators from the Graham side.
It's snow, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Serting, it, it was actually, um, snow. We're getting confused. So what he's trying to explain is there were some, uh, parts that we were able to use at snow and, um, that way, it really saved us some time. And in terms of what, what other, what units percentage wise, there's about, um, twenty to twenty-two units right now that are still in progress and they are non-classroom spaces, so storage rooms, for example. Um, and for the most part, they're, they're storage rooms. I can't think of any other, but they're, they're not being used as classrooms.
Right. Thanks, Mary.
Yep.
I believe, I believe the public speaker is on. Can we bring him in?
Yes, one, yes, one second. Mr. Tam, you may make your, uh, statement right now. Are you available?
Yep, I am. Thank you so much. I apologize for that. Uh, had to put the kids down. Um, so I'll just get right into, uh, hi, board, Dr. Triplet and staff. Uh, thank you for the opportunity for, uh, speaking after I missed my window. Um, board, I went back in time to review some of the videos where Dr. Triplet and staff went to address HVAC, uh, concerns from the public. Um, on March ninth, in the town hall, Dr. Triplet first had, uh, actually presented for the first time his HVAC slide. Um, it has those, uh, HVACs on the, in, in the image and talked about a couple of points. Uh, on March fifteenth and April first, Dr. Triplet used HVAC slides in his superintendent report. Um, during these three updates, Dr. Triplet updated community about HVAC, um, was safe and emphasizing heavily on using MIR 9 filters, uh, that were updated four times instead of two, uh, as requested by the guidelines. Uh, mechanical checks and comprehensive assessments were done, um, that they were all functioning. Um, and then, um, the, on April twentieth, uh, Ms. Dela Cruz in our town hall presented HVAC status, um, where she outlined four hundred and fifty units or so. Um, a hundred and eight, I believe, units, uh, were having issues. Um, and that by the end of the week, uh, all the work necessary to, to have them functioning, uh, were done. So based, uh, I first thank you to Cypress Engineering, uh, that was incredibly insightful. Um, uh, I had a couple of questions. Uh, first is, um, so based on the, the report and presentation that he just did, so, um, why, why was there a disconnect between kind of the message that the board, oh, sorry, that the, uh, school district was portrayed to the community versus the actual July, um, assessment of all the units, either if they were functioning or not functioning, right? So, um, you, you told us multiple times in different forums that they're working, um, but then Cypress Engineering just said that, you know, in their report, that in July of twenty twenty-one, uh, that it is not working. So there seems to be a disconnect, board. I don't know where. Um, on page two of the contract, uh, with Cypress Engineering and scope of work, there's a number four, it says, "Measure CO2 level and sample classrooms in order to justify the GPS MBPI installation." Um, I did not see that result or discussion, uh, within the, the, the presentation. One more highlight, I wanted to highlight, uh, in the documents was the, um, the portables, uh, were all marked as they do not provide co-minimum outside air. Um, so that'd be an interesting item for you to also dig in to see if, um, is that, is that for all classrooms' portables or is that for certain ones? And I thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tam. Member.
Do you, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, if you, if you want to respond, you can.
Yeah, a, a couple of things.
Mr. Sertunk, for a second, let, can I just add something before you add your comments? I just want to say that back in April, when we were reopening, the focus then was, um, looking at the ventilation and to make sure that we had the fans on. So it was a totally different, um, assessment at that time. And when we said that the HVAC units were functioning, it was that the air and the ventilation was on versus the air balancing project, which is what Metin and his team did just recently. It's totally different.
Member.
Yeah, uh, I, I think, yeah, the units were functional, but we didn't do the more detail operation, all the modes of operation, which is, uh, part of them is, uh, are we providing enough outside air? You know, that's the time that we started to find some malfunctionalities. But when you look at it or when the contractor looked at it, when the maintenance looked at it, I think, uh, the unit was functional. But we find out by doing some different tests to, uh, because we wanted to improve the outside air ventilation. That was the, uh, maybe the, uh, you know, confusion. Um, and then the other one is, uh, portable classrooms. Uh, was it Eric? I think Eric, right? Uh, portable classrooms, we did a recommendation to increase the outside air by introducing a filter box in the return air. Uh, so the circulation air restricted and we can bring more outside air. So that is also improved. Uh, actually, that, that work just completed. Um, and maybe Ralph can explain, uh, mention a little bit about the ionization test results?
That'll be a report at the next board meeting, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Caputo, I mean, Mr. Sertunk. We are preparing to share with the board in a future board meeting regarding the ionization devices. It's not ready for this meeting.
President Jiang, um, I just, for the sake of the, of the public and clarity, I just want to, I want to, I want to let you know that, I mean, I understand what you're saying is that right now, all the spaces that are occupied by children are functioning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, you know, add something though because, you know, every day, as we mentioned before, equipment is aged. There, uh, if there are some issues, uh, district is reacting and to make sure that, uh, you know, equipment is functioning properly and still, uh, mechanical contractor and Cizerco is still, uh, you know, under court contract, I believe, uh, to, uh, fix, uh, the equipment if necessary.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Mr. Santana, thank you for the report. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Sertunk.
Uh, moving on to bond projects update. Any public speaker on the item?
None at this time.
Superintendent Triplet.
Thank you, President Jiang. So this is an update on the bond projects, the status of, um, of some of the, the projects that, uh, this board has approved and been following. So we wanted to, to, um, give a little update on, on how, how that is going. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Dela Cruz. I believe we also have Mr. Caputo here to, um, to speak on this.
Thank you, Dr. Triplet. Yes, we have, uh, Mr. Caputo and Ms. Denny here tonight to share the update on the bond projects. The last time that we shared an update was back in April and, uh, there's been a lot of activity since then and a lot more, um, in progress. So Ms. Denny and Mr. Caputo, could you please share the update?
Evening. I'm Maria Denny with RGM Kramer. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you a lot of good news. We're all working hard and we have good things to show for it. Next slide, please. What we're going to cover tonight is both the great.
Ms. Denny, could you please, Ms. Denny?
Yes.
Hold for a second, we're going to catch up with you.
Okay.
The presentation we're pulling up right now.
So looks like we have some problem with the Google slides or something?
All right, you may begin.
We're ready?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what we're going to be covering tonight is all phases of our projects. We have some landscape and flooring projects we've recently completed this summer. We have projects we recently bidded, bid for the HVAC and Landscape Group Two projects. And also we're starting up some new projects, like at the Coyote Hills fencing project. Next slide, please. And Ms. Dela Cruz is going to go over the budget with you.
Our Measure G budget is pretty much the same as what we shared back in April. We spent 2.1 million in 2021 and we have 6.4 million left to spend in 21, 22. And with our landscaping projects and the HVAC projects, that will pretty much use up all of our bond money.
For our summer projects, we completed eight projects, all totaling over $1 million in just two months. And we hit seven sites. Doing the stair reconstruction at the junior high school, landscaping projects at five elementary schools and two flooring projects, one at Schilling multipurpose room and the BGI office. Next slide, please. We are getting ready to do some more construction projects. For the first group of HVAC projects, we have 99 units in fabrication for the elementary schools, along with 177 units in fabrication for the junior high and high schools. So we're getting ready, you know, we're working with the contractor. We're going to have a helicopter working on several Saturdays to put the mechanical units up on the roofs. And the mechanical units are all, you know, they're always going to be functional while school's in session. And for the HVAC Phase One Increment Two project, we just opened bids for that project. We received five bids and one bidder withdrew. The project is within budget and we've reached out to the lowest responsive bidder and we'll be starting these projects this fall. We're also going to be starting design for the next phase of HVAC projects that will require us to go to DSA. So most of these units are in the larger spaces, like the libraries and cafeterias. And then lastly on this page is the second group of landscape projects at Coyote Hills, the high school, McGregor campus and the district office. Last time, we brought this to you for award and the contractor is working on getting us pricing that does not include music and includes the alternates that have been selected. And we're going to receive that pricing tomorrow. And that construction will also start this fall. Next slide, please. Here comes the fun part with the photos. So at the junior high school, we replaced the front stair and we also renovated the, the back stair and side stair. We have irrigation and planting. We have this beautiful new seat wall at the front of the school and the new hammer rails. The project's mostly complete and we're waiting for some sure time to complete before we install the traffic coding, which will happen on the, on a weekend. Next slide, please. Okay, landscape projects. So Birch Grove Intermediate is our first one here. We're installing a lot of drought tolerant plants with irrigation. This is going to save the district a lot of water and we have a 90-day maintenance period and a one-year warranty. So every, you know, if any plant dies, the contractor will come out and replace it. It's great to welcome students back with the, you know, this welcoming landscape. Next slide, please. Birch Grove Primary. We planted over 170 plants at this school, including Pacific Mist Mansonita ground cover. Next slide. At Kennedy Elementary School, you can see some Jester flax in the foreground here and we also have some Dusky Bell's Australian fuchsia. Next slide, please. At Lincoln Elementary School, we have lavender crepe myrtles that'll provide color and shade for the students. Next slide, please. At Schilling Elementary School, if you look to the right, you'll see some native mow-free sod. So what's great about this is it's green, we can choose to mow it or not, and it uses a lot less water than conventional grass. We'll also, we also have strawberry trees installed at this site. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're looking forward to upcoming projects. We are going to be replacing some existing portables with permanent modular buildings at the junior high school and at Coyote Hills. We're currently establishing budgets and we issued a request for proposal for architectural services. For the fencing project at Coyote Hills, we had our kickoff meeting last week. Ms. Dela Cruz and I met with the architect and walked the site. So we're, we have a schedule and development and we're getting the as-built drawings to the architect to start that process. We're also starting to work on shade structures at elementary schools. Ms. Dela Cruz and I met with two shade companies. One is USA Shade, the other one was Park Planet. USA Shade provides fabric shade structures and Park Planet has a variety of metal structures available. And we did a couple of site visits at BGP and Coyote Hills. We have an RFP out, a Request for Proposal for Architectural Services, and we will get those in the middle of this month. And then the next steps for that project is selecting an architect, they'll do the drawings. We will need to get Division of the State Architect Review, followed by fabrication of the shade structures and installation. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Student board member?
Yes, so apology for the naive question, but where does the bond money come from and how often does the district receive it?
The bond came from an election several years ago. I believe it was about $68 million and we only get it when the voters pass a bond. So right now, this is the, the last of the bond monies. There was $8 million left last year and then $6 million now left to spend. So once this is spent, we'll have to go for another bond.
I see. All right. Thank you.
I guess my question is that, because I walk around some of these elementary schools and I guess for landscaping and irrigation, so the biggest reason we replace so many of these grass with planted plants, specific plants is for water conservation, right?
Yes, we wanted to do low maintenance as well as drought tolerant plants.
I see. Any other board member? Member Hill?
Yeah, so follow up to your question. So, yeah, I think it's great that we're doing drought tolerant plants. And then just out of curiosity, was there a lot of irrigation work, additional irrigation work that needed to be done to do that or was it, was there the infrastructure already in place and we just like tapped into it? Can you just give a little bit more detail on that?
Sure, Member Hill. We did have to do a lot of irrigation work because some of the irrigation was either nonexistent or needed significant repair. So it was either totally replaced or added.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and the reason I ask is both Member Grindel and I live in the same area and we're on the board for our HOA and we found that planting plants without irrigation can be problematic. So it's good that we put irrigation in. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Moving on to Old Business 13.1, Determinational Interval Process of Your Board Vacancy and Timeline. I believe that the board received, I guess the new board member received a link to the old YouTube video for the past three appointment we did in the past, I guess, past three years since end of 2018 and beginning of 2019. And I believe that's the same procedure we use in the past 10, 20 years. So I really, I think last time we spent well over 30 minutes to discuss this. Yes, any other additional comments on that? Student board member?
How are y'all advertising this vacant position to the community in general or is that something you plan on doing?
So. Sure, I can, I can chime in there and Ms. Gutierrez, feel free to, to add anything. So the, the vacancy was posted on the website and I believe it was also, was it posted in, in other areas as well, Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes, it was ever, it was mentioned here in the previous board meeting. It is on our current website. It is on our door. It is on our social media platforms and various other locations in order to inform the community. The application did go out last week, Monday, and it closed on the first, yesterday at noon.
Yep.
All right, I was just wondering. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm, I'm sure the board member watched the old videos and any comments on that?
Actually, I would appreciate if Lucia could go over the procedure that was used because there seemed to be some debate about what was used and there was some small variations between the process. I'll start with my, my concern is that if, if the candidates are narrowed in the first round to only three, with the scoring system, it's possible for one of the, the board members' number one candidate to lose out to the, to the number two candidates from, from other, other people. So I'm interested in how we can assure and whether it's possible to, to bring, if it turns out that each board member has a favorite candidate, that we would, we would, we would bring all four of those people to the next round. So if you could sort of describe what the process is, which, which rounds are what, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. So in the last three appointments that occurred here in U S D, what happened was that the, there was, there's a round of questions. So all the, all the candidates are interviewed, there's a round of questions. They are interviewed individually. All candidates are taken to the board library and then brought, brought forward one at a time. Their names were drawn out in order to select the, the order of the interviewees. There, so the, the questions occur, there is a round robin of, from the board members in regards to one board member asking a question at a time. The same questions are asked of all the candidates. Once the scoring happens, there is, in the previous past three elections, sorry, appointments, what has, what has happened is in the first round of selecting, the board members give number one to their top three candidates. Those numbers then get tallied up and there is a, a score and the top three move on to the next round. From that second round, then the candidates, sorry, the board members give a, put a number scale, three to one, three being the highest. So whoever scores the highest total ends up being the selected candidate.
So I want to answer your question regarding what if you're using the top three choice, each board member, what if your favorite candidate couldn't get into top three? So the only reason that if a board member's favorite candidate didn't get into top three is because the other three didn't select him. So possibly that's probably, that candidate is probably not going to get an appointment anyway. So the reason we picked top three is that you have your first choice, you have your second choice and you even have your third choice to get considered by the board. And, and the interesting thing is that during my appointment process and during Member Wynn's appointment process, there were a total of four candidates. So the first round, we have top three advance. So you have one candidate that's sort of eliminated in the first round, then we have the scoring system. And I believe, do we have the number of applicants that, that, that are submitted for this time?
Yes.
So how, how many of them?
I'm not, is that, okay, we have four candidates?
Yeah, so, so it looks like this number is the same thing as the previous two rounds of appointments, so.
So this, this is my concern, this is why I asked Lucia to describe this because what you're just saying is different from what Lucia just said, unless I heard it wrong.
No, 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 that's, that's not, I mean, I, I said the first round, you select top three candidates and then three candidate advanced to the second round and then you have a ranking of one, two, three, three being the highest. What I described last time was exactly what happened to my appointment, to her appointment.
So, okay, so I'll restate it. So the first round, each member chooses one candidate.
No, six. Candidate.
I, I can, I can provide. I can provide clarity. So the first round, you give a number one to your top three candidates, one, one, one. And there's going to be someone, in this situation, there's four, someone would be left out. Same goes for every board member, so each one gives a one, one, one. Those ones get added up. So the one with the, the three candidates with the highest numbers move on to the next round.
Great, so I understand and that's fine, but that's different from what I was hearing from President Shang. So maybe it's my ears, I don't know. So the first round, there's no ranking, you simply get three votes. And then that helps to narrow down. My other question is, in all of these scenarios, a tie is possible. What is the process for resolving ties?
It's actually the board's discretion.
Yeah, we never had a tie, so if we really have a tie, we can discuss.
I think I'd be interested in having that examined.
So if I can provide some information in regards to other districts, for example, in Aloney, there was the possibility of a second round of questions. And in their last appointment, the board decided not to move on to their second round of questions, but that is a possibility. So it could be like one or two questions, a limited number, not four or five again. And then a reranking, correct?
Okay, I guess if that's the case, then we need board member to send to the subcommittee one question to be asked in a regular interview and possibly one alternate question for the, in case of duplication and in case of advance an extra round of questioning if we happen to have a tie. Member Hill?
Yeah, so thank you, President Shang. So just for clarification, in that first round, so we're voting for three candidates, right? But we wouldn't be like saying, okay, just the same candidate and we vote one for that. It's three distinct candidates that we vote for.
So in the past, it's three distinct candidates, each, your top three gets one point.
Right, but we couldn't say, okay, this person is the best and so I'm going to give three ones to that one person. It's three distinct candidates. Okay, all right.
It will help a lot if you watch the appointment of member Wynn and myself, so exactly the same process.
If, in this situation, member Hill, if there was one candidate that stood out, then in that second round, that would be the candidate that you would give your three points to.
Okay, all right.
And just for the sake of clarity, if I'm understanding correctly, is the board agreeing to follow the previous practice?
I mean, this is not my practice, this is the process, been there for 10 years, so I will follow that process.
I'm also in agreement with following the previous practice.
Yes, I'm okay with following the previous practice.
Can you hear me? Okay. So yeah, everything looks fine to me. The only part, because this is what was forwarded to me through superintendent, was in articulating the process, is that in the, right, we're going to do ranking in the final rounds, okay, so we're going to see, you know, what the general consensus is. But at the same time, right, I mean, I think that we were ultimately, as elected officials, if we feel strongly that we don't agree necessarily, that we can dissent. But presumably, presumably, if the, if other board members are ranking somebody more highly, that's the person that's going to get voted for.
Yeah, I mean, in the past three rounds, when I watched the video, even including my own interview, the board member that gave me the lowest score ended up voting for me because that's the rest of the board. So we did, I mean, the past round, we were 4-0.
Right, but that's not required.
It's not required, but I guess they did it for courtesy reason.
Okay, all right, okay.
So then in order to provide some feedback, the meeting currently has been scheduled for the 21st. On that day, it will be a special meeting.
It'll be a Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, the 21st, September 21st, it will be a special meeting and...
And then we should have soaring in right after the interview, right?
That is correct.
So could we get clarification on a couple dates? So we have the current candidates in, so the current applications in, but there still needs to be confirmation that they meet the basic requirements, which are that they are citizens and that they live, they're residents of Newark. So when is the date when we're going to finalize that?
So the subcommittee, which in this case would be President Shang and Vice President Wynn, the goal was to meet the Friday before that Monday in order to review that based on their availability?
Yeah, should be two Fridays from tomorrow, I mean, two weeks from tomorrow.
So why can't we do it faster, right? It's a pretty simple process. And then we can put the names of the candidates on the website so everybody understands who is, you know, who's applying for this. Why can't we have this done by Monday?
It's been the practice in other organizations as well. What happens is after the review, then there is an email sent to the candidates to confirm that they are going to be available for the meeting and that they still want to proceed. Once we get confirmation from then, then the names and all the information is released along with the agenda.
Okay. We can review the application a bit earlier, but...
I mean, we're striving for efficiency, right? So it seems like a pretty simple process, why can't we speed it up?
The date has already been announced on the application. So this is information that is required to provide to them and that was the date that was selected, so that was the date that was provided in the application process to let them know that it was going to be on the 21st.
Right, but I'm not talking about the 21st date, I'm talking about the date where we finished our vetting and we've identified the candidates and then we're publicly posting that on the website, right?
It's part of the agenda release?
We can publish the names of the candidates once they've been vetted, right?
It's not, it hasn't been the practice in other districts as well as ours, it doesn't get released until, along with the agenda.
Okay, so we're talking about tradition, right? But we have discretion around how we're going to follow this. And I think that, you know, if we're looking for transparency, right? So all we have to do is vet and then post the names. They're running, right, it's public, so let's, you know, let's see who they are. Right? And then if we're concerned about that, I mean, you know, again, I think we, and we could ask the candidates if we wanted to move the meeting forward. Is there a, I mean, we got an open seat, we have business to perform, let's get this person on as quickly as possible.
I mean, I'm actually fine with releasing the name, but probably no more than a week, you know, because I think Aloney had released that name.
Aloney did not release the names until the date before the meeting, which was when the agenda was released.
I see.
There are reasons for it. You could probably reach out to Aloney in regards to what those reasons are.
Okay, okay.
But we can decide, right? We as a board can decide. So I think we put it to a vote, I mean, like, I'd like to move that we quickly get the vetting done and we, you know, get the names of the people out there sometime next week.
What could be the potential drawback of not releasing the candidate's name a bit too early because, I mean, the candidates are still private individuals, any downside risk for releasing the name too early?
You're the board.
I mean, if they want to attract early public attention, I think we're fine.
I don't feel strongly either way, I think, I don't know what would benefit or harm is done by releasing it early. I don't, you know, I don't really think, you know, the decision's going to be made, decision's going to be made based on the interview, based, and, you know, transparently. So having it out a lot longer does allow for more conversation to occur, which may not really be appropriate. So I think releasing it closer to the meeting time allows us to base the choice on how people answer the questions that we're formulating.
I'm in agreement with member Grindel. I believe that we should just release it with the agenda release for that meeting, for that special meeting, which would be the Friday before, correct? Or the Monday before?
Okay.
And how many candidates have prior to the screen? So we have four that have not...
Yeah, that's what they said, I don't know the number.
Have not been screened yet, okay.
Yeah, because we still have to meet, the subcommittee still has to meet and vet the applications.
I mean, one of the vetting is, they need to be registered voter of Newark, so I might need to call the county registrar of voters to confirm this person indeed is a registered voter of Newark. You can't have an address there, you might not be a registered voter there and that information is from the county registrar of voters.
Wait, I don't think you have to be a registered voter, you have to be a citizen, right?
No, you need to be a registered voter in Newark to be a school board member.
Okay.
So we'll just follow prior practice. But board members, given that we raised the possibility of an extra round, so I guess right now everybody will have to send in an alternate question in case of either extra round or duplication of questions.
The other alternative would, in the case of a tie, would be for members to explain their reasons in positive terms only, not negative terms. In positive terms only, their reasons for the choices that they made and perhaps they'll convince other members of that. That would be my suggestion as a first step. But the key is that we stay, we would have to stay positive as to our positive reasons why we supported particular candidates.
You know, I understand that, but I will be very, very, I will be very, very reserved when it comes to commenting on private individual during public meetings, even if it is positive things.
A recommendation could be that if two candidates are there, a motion could be made at that moment. For one or the other.
Right. Well, and essentially there could be discussion of that motion. So that's aligned with my thinking.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. Yes, moving on to New Business 14.1, 2020 to 2021, audited actual financial reports. We have a public speaker, Ms. Parks.
Good evening. For a district that was suffering financially, your unaudited actuels are quite amazing. You now have a 17% reserve. The fund summary at a glance looks very good. Of course, the infusion of federal stimulus and COVID money totals which close to 11.5 million helped. You have a remaining balance of approximately 4.5 million. As I said, most funds are doing very well. The only exception is childcare, which would be expected due to the loss of children and the revenue from paying parents, but with salaries that still needed to be paid is not surprising. What is surprising is the service and other operating expenditure deficit of $333,846 and the need for an inter-fund transfer of $117,000. That is a total deficit of $450,000 and I didn't see that reflected in your June budget, nor is it fully explained in the recently uploaded presentation. I hope this will be fully explained tonight. Thank you.
Any other public speakers? Superintendent Triplet?
Thank you, President Shang. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dela Cruz to present the unaudited actuels.
Thank you, Dr. Triplet. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I am pleased to share with you the unaudited actuels for 2021. So the unaudited actuels is the year-end review for 2021, which was last year. It reflects the actual revenues and expenditures for the year. It's also known as closing the books. So this is the final report for 2021 and it's the revenues and expenditures as compared to the budget. It covers the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. This report is due to the Alameda County Office of Education by September 15th and the auditors will be reviewing the report and provide an audit report by December 15th. As a summary, the revenues for the year was 78 million. This is including unrestricted and restricted revenues. 72% represents unrestricted, which is about 56 million, and 28% is restricted, which is 22 million. It's about 0.5% difference between what was projected at estimated actuels, which is pretty good. And on the expenditure side, there was a total of 68.8 million, almost 69 million in expenditures. And of that, 62% is unrestricted, which is about 42.6 million, and 38% is restricted, which is 26 million. And the difference between what was projected at estimated actuels and the actual unaudited actuels is minus 8%. So as a result, we ended with an increase to fund balance of 9.2 million. And 5.2 million of that is unrestricted and 4 million is restricted. Throughout the year, we provide you, I provide you a report from adopted to the first interim budget, second interim, and now the unaudited actuels. There were several factors that were part of the financials. And throughout the year, except for the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, there were no changes in any of the funding factors, including the amount that we get for lottery, the mandated block grant, and then our STIRS and PERS expenses. Were pretty much the same from the adopted budget to the end of the year. ADA and enrollment, this is a critical part of our funding. Our history has been declining for the last 10 years. There was only a time between 1617 and 1718 where we had a slight increase. So last year, our actual ADA was 5,483. And this is the same as it was last year because we had a hold harmless agreement or hold harmless provision by the state due to the COVID pandemic. Normally, we're funded based on either the prior year ADA or the current ADA, whichever is higher. And since our prior year ADA was the 5,483, or what we were funded was actually the same, 5,483. Our enrollment was 5,503 in 2021, which was 128 students less than last year, the year before, 1920, and 97 less than what was projected. Our average ADA to enrollment ratio for the last five years has been 96 to 97%. Now, keep in mind when we talk about enrollment and ADA, we have just recently reported our ADA and our enrollment is down by about almost 300 students. That's going to significantly impact our funding for next year. And if you consider that every ADA is about $10,000 per ADA, that's going to be a $3 million impact on our budget. And I will be updating that during first interim and will be reflected in the multi-year projection. Our general fund revenue components includes the local control funding formula. We have funding from the federal sources and other state, which is where the lottery funds come from, and then other local, which includes some rental income and leases as well as donations. The majority of our funding does come from the local control funding formula, which is 70% of our total revenues, which is 55 million. The expenditures for the year was, um, 68.8 million, and the, the biggest difference between estimated actuels and what we ended up with was from the services and other operating expenditures, which was about, um, 4.5 million dollars less than what we had estimated in the actuels. So our, our expenses in total were $6 million less than what we had estimated. We did have the COVID-19 relief funds last year. We closed our schools in March of 2020, and we transitioned to distance learning. We reopened to hybrid in-person the week of April 19th. In total, we received 11.5 million in federal and state one-time emergency funds to support all of the related activities due to the pandemic. A total of almost 7 million was spent in 2021, and some of the expenditures included PPE, the personal protective equipment. Uh, we were able to buy Chromebooks, technology devices, and, uh, did some HVAC repairs, uh, support services such as mental health and materials for distance learning. So the different sources, uh, of the federal stimulus and the COVID relief funds includes the ESER, which is the Emergency Secondary Relief, the GEAR funds, the CRF, it's the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and then we got some ESER II monies, um, some learning loss mitigation, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, and the in-person instruction grant, for a total of 11.5 million. We spent almost 7 million, so what's being carried over is 4.5. You can see that, um, we've spent all of our ESER money, our GEAR money, and the CRF, the learning loss mitigation money. We do have some ESER II funds as well as the ELO and the in-person instruction grant. What's not included here is the ESER III because we did not receive that allocation until the end of the year, so that will be reflected in the 2122 budget. And again, remember, these are one-time funds. It's been very helpful, um, relief, uh, to our general fund and as well as us, uh, being able to respond to the needs of, um, the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So in terms of the contributions and transfers to restricted programs, our general fund does contribute to the special education program and also the routine restricted maintenance account because we don't, um, our funding from federal and state resources for special ed is not, uh, sufficient enough, so our general fund does have to support and contribute. And last year, we contributed 6 million in special ed, and the routine restricted maintenance is, what's required is 3%, and we were, um, we contributed almost 2 million for a total of 8 million in contribution. And this, um, actually was a decrease in what we had estimated in the estimated actuels of about 985,000. So in our ending fund balance, we, uh, ended with an increase to fund balance of 5.2 million in the unrestricted general fund for a total ending fund balance of 11.4 million. Our reserve for economic uncertainties is now at 14% of total expenditures, and when you add that with the 3%, that's in Fund 17, we now have a total of 17% in our reserves, which accomplishes the board's goal and commitment to achieving the minimum of 17%. Uh, some of the other components in our ending fund balance, we were able to assign, uh, some deferred maintenance money for 500,000, um, academic program improvements for 500,000. We do have some carryover from LCAP, about 500,000. And we did assign, uh, strategies to increase enrollment of 100,000, and then the reserve for the economic uncertainties. The restricted portion of the ending fund balance is about 6.8 million. When looking at our financial position and the future years, the minimum requirement is a 3% reserve, so as you can see, for next year and the two out-years, our ending fund balance and, uh, actually our reserve for economic uncertainties is way over the 3% minimum requirement. We're projecting 10 million this year, 11.6 million the, the next year, and 11.7 million. But again, keep in mind, because our ADA enrollment is going down, uh, compared to what we projected, that may look different at first interim. The fund summary is at a glance, um, including our adult education fund, child development fund, our child nutrition fund, uh, the bond fund, our capital facilities funds, and our special reserve for capital outlay. We have a total of ending fund balance of 72 million. All of our funds do have a positive ending fund balance as of June 30th. I do want to make a note that in Fund 12, the child development fund, there was, uh, negative 117 in the unrestricted general resource, but overall, that fund was positive. And the reason for the, the negative and the deficit was because we continued to, um, pay salaries and benefits, and, um, even though the childcare was closed from March 2020 to April, no, was it, April 2021, um, we weren't receiving any revenues, so that created a, a deficit. We were able to contribute some of the ESER funds towards the overall deficit. Actually, the total deficit was over 400,000, and we contributed 300,000 from ESER, which is why there was a, a deficit in the services and operating expenses in child, in the child development fund, because that's where, according to SACS, we were required to record it, record that contribution. So overall, um, our increase to fund balance of 5.2 million resulted in a total of 11.4 million in our ending fund balance and our total reserves between general fund and Fund 17 is now 17%, which is, um, five years ahead of schedule. And our external auditors will be providing our audit report by December 15th. They've already started reviewing our records, and they'll continue to do so in the next couple of months. The next report will be the first interim report, which will present in December of 2021.
I think that there's a typo, right? That's the report for 2021 to 2022, right?
No, this is our 2021.
No, next, next financial report will be the first interim report for 2021 to 2022 to be presented in December 2021.
Oh, thank you, thank you, President Zheng. You're right. 20, that should be 2122, yes, to be presented in 2021. Thank you. So, um, at this time, the recommendation is that we approve the 2021 unaudited actuels. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the business services staff, especially to Ms. Kim Lola, our Director of Fiscal Services, who's done a tremendous amount of work, uh, towards the closing the books. And then, um, Jody, my admin assistant, our district accountant, Kathleen Cypress, Jane Billman, our accounts payable tech, and Stella, our accounts receivable tech, Mary Bingham, our payroll technician, and Annette, our payroll technicians, make sure that we all get our paychecks on time. So thank you to all of the, uh, staff members who help contribute and work, uh, really hard every day throughout the year. And that's it. Any questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, and on behalf of the entire board, as board president, I want to thank your team for your hard work in the past year. Student member, go first.
Out of curiosity, uh, you mentioned that the enrollment rate was decreasing. Is there a specific reason why?
We can only make assumptions that, um, that the, the students are either not coming to school altogether or, um, because of, you know, the, the COVID pandemic, or they're choosing to go elsewhere. Or the population right now, um, like for the entering kindergartens and the TKs are a lot lower than what we had anticipated.
So, so I, I have a sort of a macro number to share with, with the board. So I believe, right at, when we conducted the census for New York City, we thought we were going to have 51,000 people. That's the general consensus. We're going to be over 50,000. The city, we're going to receive the community development grant from the federal government. It looks like if today you look at the federal census for the past decade, we're around 47,000. So we sort of under, we sort of lost either 4,000 people during the duration of the pandemic or whatever happened, but we thought we were going to have 51,000. I think the, the census show we're roughly a bit over 47,000, so that's a loss of 4,000 people. Any other questions? Member Hill?
So thank you, Ms. Dela Cruz, for your report. So two questions. Um, the first question is, I'm still learning how we do accounting in our district, but one, one question I had is that, like, if I looked at your sort of general summary slide, so there's, there's a column for adopted budget, and then there's estimated actuels, and then there's unaudited, unaudited actuels, right? And then there's a delta. But then we're reporting the delta against estimated actuels versus unaudited actuels. How come we're not comparing it against the budget? So that's question one. And then question two is, thank you for, um, providing a little bit more detail around the childcare development fund, but can you also help us understand what the root cause of that delta was? So those are my two questions.
So the reason why the focus here is on the estimated actuels compared to unaudited because the last report that we present to the board speaks to what we estimate to be the year-end. So we'd like to compare what we had projected to be, um, the year-end actuels to what was actually, um, what, what the actuels ended up with at the end of the year. So that way, it gives, it, it gives the board an idea of where we, we're at and how close we are with our projections. We could compare it to the adopted budget, um, but it doesn't have the same significance because the current year budget is, is different in circumstances and other needs as to what we had planned for in the previous year.
The, the reason I ask that question, right, is normally in corporate America, right, your, your original budget is your forecast, right? And then you're tracking to that. Um, and then you then see how good you are at forecasting and then also kind of what the root cause is. If you're changing the forecast, then you're sort of losing sight of what the, you know, the original plan was. And so that was my question for the first part.
Yeah, so what we do with the adopted budget, we compare it, um, and use that in our first interim. So throughout the year, we're, um, analyzing how the adopted budget compares to the current revised budget. So each time we present a report, you're going to see where we are in the projections compared to the adopted budget, and that's throughout the year. But then at year-end, um, we do look at the estimated actuels. It's kind of like a progression.
Thank you. And then the second question was just, what's, what do we think the root cause of the childcare development delta was?
Well, the root cause was, uh, childcare was closed, so we didn't generate any income. However, the staff remained the same and remained to be on payroll. So no income, same expenses caused the deficit.
So, so actually, uh, we have quite a bit of back and forth on this before the meeting, so I guess the la- the last part, I still didn't quite understand is that. The deficit, why we're transferring the inter-fund borrowing will close the deficit? Because by law, you can transfer at the beginning of the year, you got to pay back at the end of the year. So, so transfer fund is not, is, is not there to, to close the deficit, but why in this case? Because at your 190, page 199, I'm 190, is that deferred revenue carry will be corrected at first, I mean, it says, this already says the, yeah, I think that deferred revenue, the, the inter-fund borrowing can cover the, the, the deficit, but by the time when you pay it back, shouldn't you still have a deficit left there?
Yeah, no, that's a, a temporary solution for the deficit, so the inter-fund borrowing will help cover that deficit, and, um, since we're open now, the, the childcare will now generate income to pay that back. So it's only to temporarily cover that deficit.
But like, yeah, the childcare can be open, but you still continue to have the expense of paying the staff, right? So I guess my, my, my question is, when you pay back the transfer at the end of this fiscal year, wouldn't you still have a deficit there?
No.
Because previously, you were borrowing the money, and then you, when you pay it back, even though you're generating revenue, you're still paying the same staff salary and benefits, right?
Yeah.
So it looks like that one-time loss from last year is a permanent deficit, is a permanent loss, it looks like.
The, the childcare normally, um, makes a little bit more than what they're spending. So usually, they have a, a surplus at the end of the year.
I see, I see. That's Fund 12, right?
Fund 12.
Okay. Any other questions? Member Grundel?
Yes, um, just want to thank you for this excellent report. It's great to see us, um, so quickly, you know, five years ahead of schedule getting to the reserve goal that we had, so, um, I appreciate, I appreciate your, your detailed look at all of this. I just want to put, to, uh, to sort of reiterate what the question that came from the student member, how important it is that we get our enrollment up, um, and, um, and then sort of, uh, asking superintendent to be a fortune teller, um, is there any thought amongst other, uh, other superintendents or their experts that there's, that maybe parents are, were at the enrollment deadlines, hesitant to, um, enroll their children and that they, they might come trickling in? Or is there a sense that this is, that this gap is likely to be for the whole year?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Member Grundel. Um, it is hard to be a fortune teller, but I do think that, uh, there is a sense that, um, there's been a lot of movement out, out of the Bay Area, particularly for families in, in sort of, uh, school age, school age families during this COVID, and, um, and it's actually a trend that started before COVID, um, just the expense of the Bay Area is such that, um, it's, it's meant, uh, movement on the part of a lot of families. So that's one factor. Um, I, I think there is a question mark out there, though, of, uh, you know, but where, where have the kids gone? And so we'll, we'll continue to look at that, and, um, I, I think in the end, we're going to realize that, that it's multifaceted.
With that, I move that we, I move that we approved the 2020 to 2021 unaudited actuels. May I get a second?
A second?
Student member, how do you vote?
Yay.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Grundel?
Yes.
Member Win?
Yes.
My vote is this as well. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have the board up open for the, for the voting? I don't see that. Okay, there, there we go. We have that one, okay. Moving on to consent calendar, uh, 15.2 Personnel Report. I move that we approve the personnel report as presented. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Second if I, Member Grundel, Personnel Issue, Student Board Member doesn't get a vote. Member Grundel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
So sorry, I just have a question. Do we, um, do we have any new hires on that personnel report?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay. Because I, I, I understand that we, uh, I think that we found a replacement for the director of, um, is that on this personnel report? Or is that for a future date?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, the, the, the personnel report is there in the, in the board docs.
Yeah, the personnel report is there in the board docs. And we did, it does include the replacement for the Director of Special Projects. It also includes an interim administrator for the Director of Pupil Services.
Okay, thank you. So as people know, from my prior concerns around the hiring process and the lack of transparency, I cannot vote to support that. So my vote is no.
Member Winn?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Motion carries with three i's. Member Hill voted no. Moving on to a consent calendar, non-personal.
Yeah, President Zhang, we actually have the Director of, the candidate here.
That's, let's introduce them.
Invite them in. Ms. Ingle Waters, are you going to do the honors?
Hello. Yes, it is my pleasure to welcome to Newark Abby Karins. Abby has spent the last 18 years working in education in the Bay Area, focusing primarily on literacy, language, and continuous improvement. She began her journey working for the Coalition of Essential Schools in Oakland, supporting a national network of small schools focused on performance assessments and other student center practices. She then went on to get her master's in teaching from Brown University, teaching in Oakland as a high school English teacher and middle school instructional coach. Her extensive experience includes coaching K to 12 teams in various settings, including dual immersion and bilingual schools, leading the professional learning of principals, teachers, and instructional coaches to implement high-impact language and literacy practices, managing large-scale curriculum adoption, and community engagement processes. She most recently was a high school administrator in San Leandro Unified School District. Beyond work, Abby is a mother, sister, daughter, wife, and friend. She believes in the power of listening to students, families, and colleagues because it is through listening that we, as leaders, learn about how to best do the hard work together. She grew up in Rhode Island, so feels right at home in a small district where everyone knows each other. Abby is looking forward to becoming a member of the Newark family. And Abby is here to say hello, well, virtually. Welcome, Abby.
Thank you so much, Ingle Waters. That was so sweet. I appreciate the introduction. Nice to meet you, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Triplet, and I'm very excited to start the work with you all.
Thank you. Welcome to Newark.
Welcome to Newark.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on to.
Can I just give a little intro one more? So I would also like to reintroduce to the Newark community Bill Witten. He was here earlier in person, but had to head out. I would like to read a little bit about Bill Witten. He is a retired NUSD District Administrator. He is again serving as the Coordinator of Pupil Services on an interim basis. Bill worked full-time in Newark in his former position from January of 2008 through April of 2019. Prior to work in Newark, Bill was the Dean of Men, then Dean of Discipline at St. Joseph Notre Dame High School in the city of Alameda. He was also the Director of Attendance and Student Services and a secondary history and social studies teacher in the San Leandro Unified School District. Bill now resides in Jackson, California, with his wife and four pug dogs. He is most proud of his three adult children, who are truly essential workers in food production, the Air Force, and as a paramedic firefighter. Bill responded to the call for interim help in pupil services because, as he put it, "He wants to be good now for NUSD because Newark was always very good to him, to me." So we're very happy to have Mr. Witten back in the district office supporting our sites and leaders and families.
Welcome back, Bill.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
With that, we move to consent calendar, non-personal items. I would like to pull item 16.2 because I have one tiny question. So I move that we approve 16.3 through 16.7. 16.3 Master Contract with the San Rehab Services Inn for Special Education Services. Item 16.4 Cal State MOU and Agreement Regarding Cal State Teach/Student Teacher Placement. 16.5 Minutes of August 5, 2021, Special Meeting of the Board of Education. 16.6 Minutes of the August 5, 2021, Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. 16.7 Minutes of the August 18, 2021, Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. May I get a second?
A second?
Seconded by Member Winn? Student Board Member, how do you vote?
Yay.
Member Grundel?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
My vote is yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. On 6.2, just one tiny question. I know the computing limit, so I guess the question is, is this just a formality? And this is non-binding literally? Because this doesn't really cap the amount of money we spend.
Yes, that's true, President Zhang. This is a formality, and the calculations are automatically done by the SAC software. And even if there was some sort of limit that would change our spending, we are still able to request from the state, and it's automatically approved, so.
Is this, this is the limit on the unrestricted portion of general fund? Is that right?
Yes, unrestricted.
Okay. But with that, I move that we approve Resolution 2021 dot 20, 2021 dot 22 dot 05 for the 2021 and 2021 to 2020 gap limit. May I get a second? Seconded by Member Grundel? Student Board Member, how do you vote?
I'm a bit lost on what I am voting. Could you give me a brief explanation?
So this is sort of a software presented, sort of a limit, a spending limit based on our revenue expenditure on the unrestricted portion of the general fund. So the reason, so this is done by a software automatically. So this is sort of a formality every year, saying there's sort of a spending limit that you cannot spend over this amount of money. But if you really have need, you can apply to the county generally, county will approve. So this is both a formality and sort of a non-binding limit. That's why on the consent calendar, generally, not that much discussion is needed.
I see, all right. Vote yes.
Member Grundel?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board of Education Committee Report, Request an Announcement. 17.1 Education Recognition Announcement. Student Board Member, I will let you go first.
At the moment, I do not have any announcements to give.
Okay. Member Grundel?
I want to welcome our student board member. So very happy to have our full complement, almost. We're still looking to appoint a member, but it's nice to have such an energetic and active person helping us out with this, on this level. So thank you. And just want to pass along my compliments to the, all the staff in moving these projects forwards, all the teachers and certificated employees and management that's making the school run and helping to teach our children. So thank you.
Member Hill?
I echo Member Grundel's sentiments.
Member Winn?
I too want to welcome student board member. We're excited to have you onboard and to also have your voice and advocacy for the students, so welcome. And then to staff, especially Ms. Dela Cruz, your staff, for doing a tremendous job on presenting our, our actuals, our unaudited actuals. And again, thank you to the staff and all the teachers at all the sites and the administrators at all the sites for continuing to work really hard under, you know, continually changing conditions. And it's very much appreciated, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the board. And when I was first appointed to the board, January 2019, I believe we're heading toward bankruptcy and state takeover. And I guess with a combination of tough decision-making and good luck, and we really turned this around within a span of two years and a half. And in addition, yeah, in addition, I want to say happy birthday to Member Grundel. And with that, moving. Mission Valley ROP, so given I'm the alternate for the Mission Valley ROP, I'll be, I'll assume the presidency of Mission Valley ROP for this year because this, this year Newark is supposed to be the chair of Mission Valley ROP. I'll have a meeting next Thursday at 3:30 PM. That's for Mission Valley ROP. SOPA, there's nothing for SOPA. What about Liaison Committee?
We are scheduled to have a meeting, not this month, but next month. And we'll report back in October.
And we have a vacancy at IBIT. I think this will be agenda is for the next board meeting or maybe after we have a new board member to determine to fill the vacancy. Mission Valley ROP, I mean, I got promoted from alternate to a member, but we still need an alternate member. Audit Committee?
No updates.
Yes, nothing for Parcel Tax Committee either. Moving on.
Except that likewise, we need to worry about, we need to think about adding a member to that once we have full complement.
Yeah. Board of Education's requests. Member Grundel?
Nothing tonight.
Member Hill?
So I have two requests. So the first request is actually a follow-up when we were discussing our appointment selection process. And I forgot at this point, but so I'd like to introduce the request at this point. So it's, to my recollection, in our bylaws, although we don't really have a lot of documentation around our process, we do have some documentation. And that there is some documentation in our bylaws that talks about sort of from a transparency standpoint, you know, how we can quickly, you know, let the public know what's going on. And I believe that there are guidelines around when the names of the candidates, the applicants, need to be released. And so I'd like to request that we follow the guidelines that are in our bylaws, you know, if they, you know, whatever they may be. So that's my first request. And the second request is, I think all of you know, I've had concerns around our hiring process. And I'm concerned because I've seen a pattern of us hiring a number of people who have not held the position for which they are applying. They have not had prior experience in the position that they are applying for. And so I have concerns about that. And we don't really have, we have very, very little transparency from a board perspective in terms of how the process is working. And so, and we have been given assurances that there is a qualified team that is involved in the hiring process. And yet, we do not know who the team is. We're looking and seeing, at least from my perspective, that we're not hiring people that have held these positions before. So I think that we need to evaluate who is on this team and whether we need to make adjustments. So I've been told by the superintendent that it's not appropriate for one board member to be asking for this. But I think that it is appropriate for us as a board, from a transparency perspective, to have complete knowledge of what's going on and also oversight. And that doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to get into the weeds. But if we're going to look at and make sure that we have the right people making the right decisions, I think that we have a full right and actually an expectation from the public that we're exercising our fiduciary responsibility and our oversight responsibility. So I would like to request that we, as a board, ask the superintendent to communicate to us who is on the hiring committee so that we can make an evaluation of whether they are the right people. That's my second request.
Superintendent, I guess in your Wednesday memo, I think, I think, can you send something? Obviously, you don't need to name names. But in your Wednesday memo, can you send a brief introduction about the position makeup of the interview panel?
But I'm asking for the names of the people that are on the hiring committee. So that's what I'm saying, and that we, as a board, have, there are no secrets that can be kept from the board. And this is, this is based on prior advice, legal advice that's been given to prior boards from people that are experts in this area. And so I'm asking, I'm saying that I have concerns about whether we're making the right hiring decisions. We're being given assurances that the right people are on the team. We have no knowledge of who those people are. So I'm requesting that the superintendent communicate to us the names of those so that we can evaluate whether we have the right people on the hiring team.
Does the rest of the board want to see names or just position makeup?
I think the role of the board and oversight is, if we, if we want to make changes to the process, I think that's fine. But in terms of like intertwining and trying to get into position where who's on the interview panel, I, I don't think that that is our job.
I concur with Member Winn on this.
Okay, I guess we don't have a second. So, but regarding the first request.
If I could just get clarity, so with this, with the first request, if I understood it correctly, Member Hill, you're asking that the, that the vote that was taken earlier with regard to the, the, how the, at what point the names would be released? You're asking that it gets changed and that the names of the candidates need, do in fact, need to be released prior to the agenda? Is that correct?
So I'm asking that, you know, we may have made an error in our decision by not consulting our bylaws. And so I'm requesting that we follow what has been articulated in our bylaws.
My recollection is our bylaw doesn't really have that. That's my recollection.
Say that again, President.
My recollection is my bylaw doesn't have that information about how many days before that.
If we can just double check and if there is a protocol that we follow the protocol that's been articulated in the bylaws.
Okay. Member Winn, any requests?
Sorry, I just want to make sure this is, this is something that the board, the collective board is asking me to do?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my recollections have no, there's not specific, but we can double check. And you can send information for the board with no reply from the board. That just, what's the existing language in the board bylaws?
Okay. So at this point, the vote that occurred earlier is, stands, but you, the board is asking me to go back and look at the bylaws to make sure that, in fact, there's not something contradicting what was agreed upon by the board. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I, my reading of the bylaws is consistent with yours, President Zhang, but double checking doesn't, doesn't hurt.
Thank you.
Member Winn?
No requests?
Yeah, I have no request, other than I think follow-up from a previous board's request when it comes to legal discussion on the member makeup in a closed session. So that's a follow-up on the, from the program. Okay.
Thank you, board, and thank you, public and staff. Tremendous amount of work that's been going on in these first couple of weeks of school. So really, appreciative of everything that everyone is doing. I too want to really appreciate our student board member who's joined us. And in particular, student board member, you asking questions. I think I just really appreciate that. There is no bad question, and it's awesome to see you just engage right off the bat and really seeking to understand. So thank you, and keep doing that, please. It's good for all of us, really, to hear those. And then I also want to appreciate the student presenters earlier during the study session that I think standing up there and speaking from their heart and their experience took tremendous courage. Whether we agree or disagree with anything anybody says, I think it, it just takes tremendous courage for young people to come here and speak in that way, and I really, really appreciate them.
Okay, hope everyone have a great long weekend. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
A second?
Seconded by Member Winn. Student Board Member, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Grundel?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
My vote is yes as well. Motion carries unanimously, meeting adjourned at 9:50 PM. Have a great long weekend, everybody. Thank you. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.